I am going to call the meeting to order. It is August 1st. I want to welcome everyone to the Durango City Council, regular city council meeting. It is 5:30 PM. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Buehl.
Here.
Mayor Youssef.
Here.
Councillor Bosmans.
President.
Councillor Woodruff.
Here.
And Councillor Yasi.
Here.
Thank you. Can we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Yes, hi, everyone. This is Diego Ponce. I hope you hear my audio okay. If not, please let me know. I'm here from the Community Language Cooperative, the CLC, and I'm here with my colleague San Guzman this evening. So thank you for continuing to invite us to this meeting, continue to make this commitment towards language justice, which means that everyone here is able to participate and engage in the language of their heart, just simply the language they feel most comfortable in. So we'll use simultaneous interpretation to continue helping create the space in English and in Spanish. Once I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat it in Spanish, the instructions, then at that moment, we can start the interpretation. Once interpretation is on, as always, you'll be able to see that glow by icon that says interpretation there in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. We'll ask you to please select that glow by icon when it appears on your screen and to please select to prefer language. And if you happen to be joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, you'd instead be looking for the more button or the three dots button so that you can select to prefer language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, we ask you to please select to prefer language so you can use less interpretation whenever someone's going to be speaking in the opposite language. If you are bilingual, then you can just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language channel. Once you do decide to select the language channel, you can always select the original audio if you would like to do so to not have to hear both languages at the same time. And as always, just please pay attention to the speed and what you're speaking. Just please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace and please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. When I started with those, it was zero points. It's like you're the part of the cooperative community that has a justice language. Si o si, con mi colega San Guzman. Gracias como siempre por invitarnos hoy a su reunión. Los organizadores de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Eso significa que queremos crear un espacio para que todos puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón, que es simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Y ahora cuando ya termina de decir esto, se activará la interpretación. Ya con esa actividad de interpretación, usted va a poder ver ese icono del globo de la tierra que era interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Le vamos a pedir que, por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo de la tierra y que, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a la reunión en su celular o su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar que seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sí es bilingüe, se puede sentir y escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Y como siempre, cuando usted seleccione su idioma, puede seleccionar silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll start with opening comments today. I just wanted everyone to know in council in particular that I did take the time to meet with some of our former mayors over lunch. And we had about seven or eight of our former mayors there. It was a very productive meeting. And some of the agenda format changes that you see tonight are directly the result of that meeting. So I wanted you to be informed about that. I think they made some great recommendations for us. And now for some very fun, fun part of our evening. We have some important people tonight joining us for recognition. The city has been partnering with the BLM and the county to do some climbing stewardship work in partnership with our climbing partners. And to facilitate this effort, we secured a GOCO grant to hire Southwest Conservation Corps crew members to help us work in Dalla Mountain Park for seven weeks this summer on erosion control. We had a total of forty-five Southwest Conservation Corps crew members joining us. And they did truly grueling rock work to stabilize our soil, to protect our natural resources, and to enhance the climbing experience for residents and tourists alike of our community. This is some of the type of work that Southwest Conservation Corps does to preserve and enhance the natural beauty of our surroundings, to safeguard our ecosystems, and to protect our forests, our rivers, and our wildlife. And it just so happens that this year is Southwest Conservation Corps' twenty-fifth year anniversary in working in conjunction with Southwest Colorado's land management agencies. And a very important part of Southwest Conservation Corps' programs is their youth development programs. Over the years, hundreds of young participants have benefited from the mentorship and hands-on experience of these programs that they provide. They instill invaluable conservation training, and they instill teamwork, leadership, and a very strong work ethic for these young participants. And I understand that we have several of the youth crew members of Southwest Conservation Corps joining us here tonight that have been working very hard in the field at Dalla Mountain Park. Some, I imagine, some very hot days out there doing some hard work. I want to take the time to recognize them. I'm going to invite you up to the podium when I call your name. If you could please come up here for, so that we can get a photo with council. And I forgot to give my camera to you, Fay. I'd love to get a photo so that we can get a photo with all of you. But in advance, I just want to thank you so much for your efforts out there doing this hard work, preserving and protecting our trails, making it a better experience for all of us and for our climbing community members and visitors. It's really important work. We're very happy to have you in Durango and just want to thank you in advance for your efforts. If council wants to add anything, that I think we'll be calling them up. But if you want to add anything before I call them up, I'd love to hear from you. Just thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Sorry, I always put them on the spot because, you know, I have a little more time to think about this. But Dalla Mountain Park is also a really very well-used park, as you can see, probably all of the bikers and climbers joining us. So it's a really important part of our community, and we're really happy to have you here. So with that, I'm going to call some youth crew members forward. And I always try to apologize in advance for if I mispronounce your name because some of this, I swear it's the hardest part of my job. Okay, so if we can please have Saul Boschner come forward. Right on. Saul. Thank you. If you could just come right up here. Li Yang. Skylar Torrey. Benjamin Van Buskerk. Woo-hoo. Delilah Cronin. Leopold Mori. Graham Messenger. Messenger. Mira Quail. And Dakota Huber. Huber. Okay, thank you. And we're going to have to stand. We've got some tall crew members here. And then we'll get a photo. Hey, everyone. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Yes, long, hot days. I hope you've had some reprieve with a little bit of moisture. I don't know. Still hot, pretty hot out there, but thank you. And I will let you guys know if, 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 if you'd like to leave now, that's truly the finest part of our agenda. That's what I usually say. So this will be a good time, unless you want to stay for the business meeting. It's up to you. But yeah, you might want, I would suggest, it's a good time to sneak out. Thank you again. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, we will move on to our city clerk presentation.
Yeah. Yes, Mayor and Council, we have a familiar face coming back for a great presentation. Welcome back, Amy. Glad to see you.
Thank you. It's very nice to be back. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and Mr. Attorney. I'm here tonight to present the prestigious Master Municipal Clerk certification to our Durango City Clerk, Fay Harmer. The Master Municipal Clerk, or the MMC accreditation, is a long, valuable process. The first step in earning your MMC is to achieve your Certified Municipal Clerk, or your CMC, which requires, the CMC requires four hundred hours of training and education. To receive the Master Municipal Clerk certification, you have to achieve and go through an additional four hundred hours for a total of eight hundred hours. It's very prestigious to get your MMC certification. Statewide, there are three hundred and seventy-seven municipal clerks, and only ten percent, thirty-eight, oh, excuse me, thirty-nine have gotten their Master Municipal Clerk certification. I want to brag on Fay a little bit more. Fay also has, is a certified parliamentarian. Nationally, out of nine thousand one hundred and eight municipal clerks, only fourteen percent in the nation have both certifications. In addition, Fay is the first city clerk of Durango to ever receive, receive and achieve her MMC certification while serving the city of Durango. After receiving the notice of her MMC, we also received one more wonderful award. She has been accepted into the Paul Craig Athenian Leadership Society through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. You're amazing, Fay. But I have one question. Do you ever sleep? I am so privileged and honored to be able to present this award to you. And I would like everyone to join me in celebrating and congratulating Fay on her outstanding certifications. I know you all agree. The city of Durango is so lucky to have her and her incredible team. Thank you.
He's going to do backup photos. Thank you, Amy, for coming tonight. Amy, of course, is a clerk in Grand Junction now, and she had a study session yesterday and has a council meeting tomorrow. So she drove down in between to do this for us, or for me, actually. So thank you for doing that. And not only for doing that, but for mentoring me and giving me the opportunity to become a city clerk. I really do appreciate that. I also want to recognize my husband, who is here tonight, Cheryl, and our daughter Jennifer, and our granddaughter Kira, and her boyfriend Zach. I think we have some other family listening online as well. And if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes, I just want to add just a little bit more. I've worked really hard for this certification, for both of my certifications, and you know, I'm proud to be here and have this, and it's great to do that. But there's more to the story. And the rest of the story is that I started working for the city of Durango in January of 2020. And I had no municipal background, no government experience. I came out of the hospitality industry and, like most people, had no idea what a clerk even did. After Amy strongly encouraged me to take classes and learn all I could, both on the job and in the classroom, this is the end result of that. But the end result of that is a great example of how the city of Durango supports professional development and career growth, and how important professional development is to the city and to all of you have given that possibility. So I have to thank you all for that as well. And I'm honored to be your city clerk, and I appreciate that. Now I'm going to let Ben take over the meeting, and I'm going to take them.
Thank you, Fay. I just wanted to say thank you. Congratulations.
Fay, we're so lucky to have you. Thank you very much. And Amy, it's so nice to see you back in the chambers. We've missed you too.
Looks like Durango is still doing great things.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And congratulations again, Fay, on great, hard work, huge effort. We know how hard you work, very hard. Thank you. City manager updates.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we do have a couple of updates. The first one actually kind of ties in pretty well, timing or community engagement July update with Clancy Nixon, our new community engagement specialist. I know during study session there was some talk about how do we know that a community engagement part, and how do we connect it back to the city council? So this is a new segment that we will have monthly where Clancy will be reporting back to the council kind of on our community engagement initiatives, letting the council know kind of what's going on, some of the input we've received and where we're at. So with that, I will pass it on to Clancy to give the community engagement July update.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Happy to be here and do my first report for July. It's been a busy first couple of weeks. A lot of it has been spent with just informational gathering and meeting with the different departments and seeing what their community or engagement needs look like, as well as what their needs may be. And then introducing myself to just some, getting started with some community, general community contacts as well, and introducing myself there. I've been invited to co-lead the community engagement cross-functional team, and I've been getting up to speed with their efforts. I know a big focus for them has been, as of late, working groups and defining working groups and what that actually looks like. We've, the evolution there, we've kind of evolved to start calling working groups focus groups to better outline exactly what we want those groups to be doing. They're, they're not task force necessarily, but we do want to get feedback from the community and certain community members on specific projects or problems that we see. So focusing more on that feedback piece and understanding that they may not come to consensus, but their feedback is extremely important. So changing to focus groups rather than working groups and then finalizing those details of exactly what we want those focus groups to look like and what that representation looks like within the community, such as the creation criteria, you know, last thing we want is eighty focus groups happening at once. And so figuring out when is appropriate to create one of those focus groups. Currently working on a couple of specific focus groups, the first being the Horse Golt E-Bike Group. And that we're almost ready to announce to the public with a press release and kind of launching that on our Connect and Engage website, along with an application process that will hopefully be about a week out. We'll see. And then also our Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Focus Group. So we've sent out about twenty-four letters and emails to area or regional tribes. So those have gone out asking for feedback from each of those tribal liaisons regarding the Indigenous land acknowledgement that we've set up to accomplish. All of this information regarding focus groups in more details will be released on our website, our Connect and Engage part of the website as soon as we have that lined out, which should be very soon. We also are making adjustments to that Connect and Engage website. So with the help of the Public Information Office crew, we're going to be launching that general interest form for focus groups for folks who may have expertise in areas that maybe aren't suitable for those specific focus groups right now, but in the future, they may want to volunteer their time. And then also, we've decided to add a Keep Me Informed form on each of the specific projects on that Connect and Engage webpage that if somebody's interested, for instance, in the city civic center, they can just get updates regarding that project as we post public meetings, surveys, et cetera. Let's see. We're also going to be posting some information about each of the capital improvement projects. That's going to be housed on the Connect and Engage site as well. Making some efforts there with a more targeted approach through that website. Going forward, I'm hopeful that this, I'll have a lot of information as far as exactly what the Going forward, I'm hopeful that this, I'll have a lot of information as far as exactly what the community engagement efforts look like from each department and give a, a little bit of a taste of what each department is up to each month. Not a complete list, but I have compiled a few things from my meetings with folks. So Transit has been surveying city residents at Rotary Park in the corner of Thirteenth and East Second Ave to get feedback on the new concept for the Midtown Project. They're actually gonna be back at Rotary Park tomorrow afternoon, seeking more feedback, and there'll be a float-to-work day on August eighteenth. Community Development is seeking feedback regarding their customer service through an emailed survey. That's going through mid-August. The Finance Department's having a photo contest for the cover of the 2024 budget. Info's going out soon in a social media post with somebody with the selection of the photo being made on October first. And then the Public Information Office has put out a community-wide survey that was mailed out to three thousand residents, and then it can also be found online on the city of Durango website. So you can weigh in on all sorts of different topics relevant to what we have going on with projects and things. So asking for feedback from, from everybody involved in the community. That's the update so far. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for that update. I appreciate this new format, I guess, in updating us. I had a little question on the community survey. When, when will we see the results? I can't remember.
That's a good question. I'm not exactly sure when that one closes. Tom, maybe early September. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I know you said on the Engage/Connect part of the website that there's a spot you can fill out to be notified on specific projects. If you find, if you sign up for city alerts, like in general, will you get all of those updates too, or do you have to sign up for every project?
No, you can do a general Keep Me Informed, but if you didn't want to get flooded with everything and just a specific project, we wanted to have that as an option as well. It's not up yet, but it's coming this week.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No questions. I just wanted to say thanks for jumping in and rolling up your sleeves and really getting after it. So this is something that we've been needing to kind of create a connection between the community and us. So really appreciate all your hard work so far and look forward to seeing what you're capable of.
Thank you very much. It's, it's been an absolute pleasure. First two weeks has been great.
Thank you, Councilor Woodruff. I would just echo that and just say thank you. And just recognize that your expertise and assistance here with the city is a big part of our effort to get more diverse and proactive community input and in different ways and to help us make informed decisions and build relationships and foster trust. So thank you so much. We really are happy to have you on board. Anything else? Great. Okay, thanks so much. Back to you, Jose.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is a update by Amy in our Parks Department on the Southwest Conservation Corps Climbing Stewardship Project Update.
Able to drive here?
I believe Tom gets it set.
Perfect. Thank you, Tom, and thank you for the great lead-in, Mayor. I'm, I'm over the moon to have our Southwest Conservation Corps crew here with us and Jacob Mandell with the Southwest Conservation Corps crew to hone in a little bit on what exactly this year's project is. I wanted to make sure that we shared some photos too, because not just these incredible faces and, and energized bodies in here, but the photos of the project help really drive home what collaborative stewardship in our open space and trail system looks like. So tying it back to the city of Durango's mission, vision, and values, I think this project is an absolutely wonderful example of all that we are as a community in providing an amazing quality of life and recreational opportunity, not to mention the natural landscape that we protect and take care of. This crew helps us see that vision through to take care of our environment and be responsible managers of our open space program. And I don't know how better to show the values that the city stands for, but each time I come out and see these crews and I see the hard work, the teamwork, the pride that they take in their work, it's, it's an absolute honor to have the opportunity to work with them. Part of what makes that possible is our partnership and our collaboration. And what brought us to looking at Dalla Mountain Park? Dalla Mountain Park has the highest concentration of climbing opportunities in any park in any city in the state of Colorado. Dallas is one of my favorites, and I have goosebumps. I get really excited talking about this mountain park for us. The city had the opportunity to buy it in 2005. It was part of our inspiration for our '05 sales tax. This particular project also used some of that '05 sales tax to secure a grant to address erosion issues in the park. Some of our recreational uses have got impacts. And then when we get rainstorms and crazy snow events like this past year, that topsoil can flow downstream, and downstream of Dalla Mountain Park is Junction Creek. And Junction Creek flows into the Animus River, and we've got a pretty beautiful watershed that we need to be taking care of. So that need to take care of our climbing recreation, address erosion, led us to the collaboration that I'm here to talk about. Wanted to make sure I share a map. When I say Dalla Mountain Park, does everybody know where that is? Is everybody aware of the patchwork quilt that we have going on out there? So the city owns the base of the hill, county owns part of the base of the hill, and then the hill itself is owned by the BLM. Our trail systems and our recreational opportunities cross all of those land management boundaries. But as government agencies, our bank accounts don't necessarily straddle those fence lines. So that's where Great Outdoors Colorado comes in as an amazing resource for us. So Great Outdoors Colorado's funds helped us buy the park. Great Outdoors Colorado also has stewardship grant opportunities, and they have a very magical one that is specific to hiring Colorado's Youth Corps. So it's called CYCA, Colorado Youth Conservation Association. I always mess it up. So Colorado.
Youth Corps Association.
That's it. So that account, or that grant opportunity enables us to go straight to Southwest Conservation Corps. This year's project also has a key player in it, and that's our Durango Climbing Coalition. So climbers have got great notorious nicknames. There's a lot of flying under the radar. Long before Jake Dalla sold his property to the city, he was allowing our local climbing community to go in there. Got all kinds of great nicknames, including Secret Stash, because of how much climbing is in Dalla Mountain Park. So about a year ago, the climbers formed a 501(c)(3). They immediately started applying for grants, and they've secured funding to buy tools to help volunteer on open space, public lands, including the cities. They were out there with us all today, moving rocks, breaking up rocks. So the partnership is what makes this all possible, and then this team is the one doing the heavy, heavy, heavy lifting. So how the grant played out, we partnered with BLM. They hit earmarked funds in their budget, climbing stewardship, and hire Southwest Conservation Corps crews. So we grabbed that $27,000, set aside $9,000 from our '05 sales tax. Our climbers stepped up and volunteered, and we secured $48,000 from the GoCo grant opportunity to hire SCC for a total of seven weeks. These pictures just barely scratched the surface of how much rock work was moved. You'll see in the picture on the right, or is it my right? That's our open space, our city open space and trails crew. So what we did was pull rocks from other parks and rec programs to take it out there, so we weren't disturbing soil in the area, and we used that to stabilize the soil. Here are some before and after photos, and I love showing that old growth gamble oak. I don't love showing that its roots were that far exposed. That consultation with some foresters said that that tree might not be there for too long if we don't take care of it. So that's where, again, these crews come in. And with that, Jacob gets to give the fun facts on this project.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Jacob Mandell. I work on staff for the Southwest Conservation Corps. So just a quick overview of our organization. So the Southwest Conservation Corps is a conservation service program based here in Durango, Colorado. We serve the Four Corners region, and our mission is to empower individuals to positively impact their lives, their communities, and their environment. As mentioned earlier, this is the Southwest Conservation Corps' 25th anniversary, so this is a really big year for us. We've seen tremendous growth in our organization over the past three years, so we've nearly doubled our budget, our staff, our seasonal employment, and our local youth served and employed. And this has allowed us to have a really big impact on local lands in our community. So we have, Southwest Conservation Corps has a wide range of programs that serve a variety of young people. So we provide jobs for people that gives them skills for their careers. To give kind of an overview of the organization and some of the work that we do. So we have an adult program that's for eighteen to thirty-year-olds. Within that program, we have a national pool that we draw from, so folks come from all over the country and come work with us. Within those crews, we have some special affinity crews to serve specific populations. So we have a Women's Plus Crew, a Queer Crew, and a Veterans Fire Crew. We also have a Watershed Crew that works on our waterways in the region. We have a Science and Monitoring Crew, and then we have our Youth Crews highlighted here. And within our Youth Crews, really excitingly, we have an Indigenous Youth Crew that was actually spearheaded by Ty right here, who helped kind of bring that up this past summer, which is really exciting. And then we have a Backcountry Youth Crew that just spent nine days on the Peaje River. They just got out of the woods today, so that's really cool. They backpacked in with all their tools, really impressive stuff. And so kind of to dig in a little bit more about our youth programs, because that's the program I work within, some exciting numbers here. So in 2015, we employed twelve local youth. In 2023, we will employ sixty local youth, serve twenty-five middle schoolers in a volunteer program. And within these programs, the high schoolers work for four weeks and they're paid minimum wage. So they're paid for their work out there, which is really awesome. To highlight some of the work they've done too, so our crews have worked on numerous city projects the last few summers, spending time cleaning up the Animus River Trail, closing down social trails at Ogran Park, and spending multiple weeks this summer at Dalla Mountain Park. And for high schoolers to work in their backyard, it's been a really powerful experience, giving them agency and how their local lands are managed and preserved, and getting to see that and work in places that they recreate on or have been. So really powerful stuff. And then here are a couple more compelling numbers from our Dalla Mountain Project. So we've had one thousand four hundred and sixty hours worked on site, twenty-nine local youth worked on this project, ninety cubic feet of crush created and filled, countless heavy rocks moved, nine rock steps created, and ninety square feet of rock wall created. And that doesn't even count the work that has been done this week. So multiply those numbers even bigger. So lots of work, really cool stuff.
And to add to that, it is career development. We have already seen applications come in from our SCC crews in past seasons. So it is awesome to help inspire the next generation and, and have them calling and wanting to be part of the city team. So with that, any questions?
Thank you so much. It's so great to have all your assistance and energy and help and muscle-moving all these rocks. Thank you so much. It's really great. Appreciate it.
Are we allowed to do one more of these, and then I will take everybody on?
Love it. Thank you, Amy. Excellent. So now I think we are moving on to committee and board liaison reports. I have a couple. I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna pass it, and then I'll come at the end again. I was just gonna do an update, a quick update on the Airport Commission meeting from July twentieth. We, just so, are you, I'm sure everybody probably knows that they've been flying, that we have had record numbers of passengers through the airport during the first half of the year. And if that contrib, continues, then 2023 will be the busiest year on record. Total airline passenger traffic is up twelve percent compared to 2022. And we're anticipating a very busy conclusion of summer and into fall, but capacity is restricted, and there are limited aircraft. So even if there is demand, we ended up with restricted ability. We talked in the meeting a lot about the 2024 operating budget and passenger traffic forecasts. Lots of challenges for the budget, impact of inflation, regional workforce limitations, airline pilot shortages, among others. The airport remains in a very strong financial position, and we will start to fund a portion of the terminal expansion in 2024 and 2025. The restaurant transition from Durango Deli to Tailwind Hospitality is in process. They expect that to be completed September ninth. There will be a transition process where they're gonna have an interim food and beverage option. So we won't be without food and beverage, but it will be officially opened, the new restaurant, September eighth. And Highway 172 repaving, just to reiterate it one more time, from Elmore's Corner to Ignacio has started, and this, this will go through December, one-lane traffic. And they know, and they talk about this in the meetings, people are gonna miss flights. They will miss flights, and Durango people love to just show up at the very last minute and get on the airplane. And that's not gonna happen through December. You, they're suggesting you wait, you plan an extra thirty minutes to the airport. So they're working really hard on getting the message out. Anytime you know someone's traveling, remind them that we're doing these paving projects. So that's my only update for the airport. Any others? No updates? No updates? Okay.
Oh, yeah. I went to the Region Nine meeting on the twenty-seventh. And that's now combined with the COGS, Southwest Colorado Council of Governments. And most, a lot of topics are loans, the financial reports we discussed, the continued alignment of the COG and the Region Nines, especially the fiscal year. And then one specific one maybe interesting is the Enterprise Zones, which they also discussed, the ones that came for council signature on the Fort Lewis College. There were two, one of the nursing, and the other one for the Sky Pavilion, and then there's two other ones. One is the Sun One Development Association and the Crow Canyon Archaeological Center. But the ones for Fort Lewis College are closer to our home, and then they have typical topics, the broadband housing, transportation, and economic development. That's, that's what I had on that one.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Yasi?
Yes, I had a busy week last week with the, I'm on the Regional Housing Committee, and they helped sponsor a housing conference up at Fort Lewis on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and it had to do with the broad overview of all the different agencies and government and public programs that have to inter, interact and interface with each other to try to create attainable and affordable housing. So that was like, I think it was what, about seven or eight hours of discussion and interaction with all the different agencies? So that was really, really educational, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go to that. And I also attended the Durango Fire Station reveal on the twenty-eighth, and I think that they presented a really really beautiful fire station to present to the whole city here. And so I listened to some of the responses from the residents, and one thing that was brought up is that maybe we could consider having some kind of contest for naming the road that's gonna go through there. And I said I would pass that along. And then other than engaging with some of the community members, oh, I went to the, the Women's Aid event with the Women's Center last week too, because they invited me to go, and so I saw the programming that they're trying to do with the Women's Aid Fund to be able to help women in need, and I got a chance to talk to several other residences down there. And everybody seems to be really excited that we're engaging with the community more. So there we go.
Thank you for attending all those. Lot of meetings, right?
And then, real quick, I have office hours tomorrow. So I will be here from twelve-thirty to two. So if anyone wants to stop by and talk anything, City Council, I'll be here twelve-thirty.
Thank you so much for doing that. And one other item, I wanted to make sure council was aware. I wasn't sure if I informed you that I have been appointed to the Colorado River Drought Task Force by the President of the Senate, Steve Fenberg, as a representative of local, of local government within the boundaries of the Southwestern Water Conservation District. And so the Legislative Declaration declaring the task force basically notes that since 2000, the Colorado River Basin has experienced unprecedented drought conditions, and that climate change, drier conditions, and depleted snowpack may have the ability to, over time, reduce our water supplies and availability of Colorado's water surface streams for beneficial uses. So the purpose of this task force is to provide recommendations for programs to assist Colorado in addressing drought in the Colorado River Basin and to provide recommendations for potential state legislation for implementation of demand reduction programs. I had my first two-hour virtual meeting yesterday. It was about introductions. There, it's an eighteen-member task force, a lot of members of the water conservation districts throughout the state, and a couple members of local juris, municipal jurisdiction, including Durango and Grand Junction, and then some state water level ex- And then some state water level experts and state water level attorneys. So I'll be meeting two times a month through December on this task force and I will report back if any recommendations or progress is made. But I just wanted to keep you all informed. Okay. And with that, moving on to public agenda, public comment on agenda items for agenda items number eight, nine and 10. Thank you for saying if we have any. Appreciate it. None. Okay. I'll just see before I even introduce anything, if there's anyone virtually that would like to speak. This is for public comment on agenda items eight, nine and 10. Oops. So no?
Sorry, no mayor, no one has raised their hand virtually.
Great. Okay. So we will move on. Then to consent agenda. May we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item, items 8.1 are approval of meeting minutes. 8.1.1 is from the city council regular meeting from July 5th, 2023. 8.1.2 is from the city council special meeting from July 18th, 2023. Item 8, item 8.2 is final reading of ordinances. And 8.2.1 is for O-2023-12 amending impertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 8 Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics, Section 2-201. And the definitions. And then item 8.2.2 is the final reading of ordinance O-2023-13 authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of 1235 Camino del Rio and 201 East 12th Street, including 215 East 12th Street, between the Durango Fire Protection District and the City of Durango. 8.3 is adoption of resolutions by consent. And 8.3.1 is a resolution, approval of a resolution to amend the 2023 budget for the purpose of allocating the lodgers tax, arts and culture revenue overage. 8.3.2 is concerning approval of a resolution authorizing support for the Department of Local Affairs, House Bill 22-1304, Strong Communities Grant Program. 8.3.3 is regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a right of way agreement for the Big Picture High School at 215 East 12th Street, Durango, Colorado.
Right of entry agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right of entry agreement for the Big Picture High School. Thank you. And then lastly, item 8.3.4 is regarding a resolution accepting the Durango Mesa addition annexation petitions and setting a public hearing for the annexation and initial zoning scheduled for September 5th, 2023.
Thank you very much. Do we have any council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove agenda item 8.1.1, please.
Any other?
I would like to remove 8.2.2.
Any other?
No.
Okay, may we have a motion?
So move.
To approve the other items.
I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
I'll second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counsel Bosmanz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Woodruff.
Yeah, so sorry and thank you for letting me take 8.1.1 off. I, this Oh. I move to have the clerk relook at the minutes and amend them as needed. I don't know what the, what would my motion be? Can I get some clarification?
So the motion that's on the floor is a motion to approve the minutes. So if there's an issue with the, the the minutes, you need to move to have the minutes amended to reflect.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect something different than what they are currently.
What is that?
So my recollection is different. So towards the end of item number 10, page eight of your packet, it says a roll call on Counselor Bosman's substitute motion was taken, but it was actually my substitute motion. And then it said the motion failed three to two when it actually passed three to two. So I just want to point out a clarification in that. I just mostly wanted to look at the notes and maybe the minutes or not the minutes, but like look at the video and just to, there was a lot going on, a lot of different substitute motions going on at that point. Right. So that, and that was, that's on there before. That's before the failed four, two against three, then the second one was passed. But
Second.
So let me, let me suggest that since there's some confusion about what may be recorded in the minutes as opposed to what happened at the meeting, that we table the approval of these minutes until our next meeting to give us an opportunity to look and make the corrections to communicate amongst ourselves about what actually happened and how it should be reflected in the minutes. So you've properly pulled it. Having heard what you've said to justify pulling it, I would suggest that you move to table the adoption of the minutes and the next regular meeting.
I move to table the, or the adoption of the minutes until next meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counsel Bosmanz?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
All right, Counselor Bosmanz, do you have a motion?
Well, in this case, since I do not support this, and I assume that the majority of council does support it, it might be beneficial for one of you to make a motion to accept it. And then I can make my point. Because my motion will fail.
He's technically correct. So you're not supposed to vote against a motion that you bring yourself. So as the chair, you could move to get it on the floor. And then it would need a second. And then of course, as he's telegraphing to you, this is a motion that you would want to pass. But he has another comment he would like to make on it on the second reading.
Mayor and council, can I speak with Mark for a couple of minutes?
Yes.
On the, just a procedure item that I just want to make sure I get his input on real quick and then
Yes, please.
Okay.
Move to recess?
Yes. Okay, I suggest we recess. Thank you.
Yes. Second. Oh, okay. Do I have a second?
Okay, I think we need a vote then. I need a roll call for that.
Melissa, you motioned and who seconded?
Jessica Buehl. It's hard to keep up with this. Sorry, Ben.
Counsel Bosmanz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
I wanted to clarify with Mark just to make sure that we were still good to go. He has clarified that we are, we're following the procedure to go through. So I just wanted to have that moment for clarification.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that very much. We've had a motion and a second. And Counsel Bosmanz, you have five minutes.
Yep. I pulled this off the consent agenda because I do not support it. And I just wanted to make my short comments. I'll keep it shorter than the comments I made during the last meeting, the arguments why I wouldn't support it. I continue to believe that we should at least consider the train parking lot and better engage our community. I've heard people comparing this to the sewer treatment plant location, which at the time I'm sure had decent reasoning to construct it there, but in my opinion lacked the long-term vision. And as a result, we have that sewer plant at a prime location along the river, an entrance to our city and next to the sports and play areas. The River City Hall property is an equal important property along the river, and it seems it will be an opportunity lost to integrate the Great River Animus into our downtown area. And for the 9R Building, again, I think it's, it could be, it is a great opportunity, but it's not just an acquisition with a 2, 3.5 million payment, but likely a $15 million taxpayer investment that requires, in my opinion, more analysis and scrutiny, including evaluation of other options such as using existing properties for the police department. In the end, I believe we had little transparency in community engagement, but have proceeded with executive sessions and negotiations behind closed doors. So having said that, I pull this off the consent agenda as I do not support it at the way we have proceeded. And I am fully aware that the majority of council will likely proceed with this final reading. And I will accept the outcome of any motion and vote.
I will just jump in real quick for a short little, I want to thank Jose for your hard work with Chief Doughty and getting this deal done within the year that we kind of set out to do. I know it was a lot of work. I just want to reiterate for the public that they looked at 26 different properties, one of them being the train parking lot, which the fire chief and deputy chief both said that could not work any longer for that site. I'm super excited about all the public engagement you guys did, even the most recent meeting that Gilda went to, I heard was great and lots of great community input. And then the public town hall that you guys had here for the civic center and all the positive public engagement you have done has been fantastic and so significant. And so I really appreciate the efforts and I'm so excited to get this going and see how it all ends up. So thank you.
Oh, appreciate that. And we just want to make sure I pass on the kudos also to the staff, our community development, Scott Shine. We have Aaron Hyder, Assistant City Manager, Devin Schmidt with Finance, and we have Bryce and Bob. There's just total team effort. And then also Mark has been outstanding in helping us get through this process. So total team effort and just want to make sure they're publicly thanked as well.
Great, thank you, Counsel. Any other? Counsel? Oh, go ahead, Counsel Yazi.
I'd like to speak in favor of 8.2.2 because as a Durango residence, we've been waiting decades for a new fire station. And I do feel that this is to the benefit of the whole community that we move forward with this project. So thank you to everybody for their efforts.
Right. I just have to jump into, I'm I, it's just, it's, this is a very, having a final reading to finally get here and actually be on council when, when we're doing it is, is it's truly momentous. This is momentous for our entire community and it will have lasting impacts. Our facilities desperately for our fire department desperately need upgrading. This is a great opportunity. We've been working on this for so long, since before my time on council. I think they said eight years and 32 properties, or maybe you said 26, a lot of properties, including the train station lot, which has does not work due to the medians in college that they, that they've added. So, so we, we're, we're in a very excellent spot for our community and it's an exciting time to move forward. So with that, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counsel Bosmanz?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. No resolutions for consideration this evening. Moving on to first reading of ordinances. 11.1 Proposed ordinance amending the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4 Animals, Article 1 in general by adding Section 14-15 sale of cats and dogs prohibited. This was submitted by Counselor Bosmanz. I don't believe we have any staff presentation. Mr. Morgan, would you like to give just a little recap?
Sure. This was a matter that was brought to a study session through a counselor from a member of, I'm not sure if she's from this community or a different community. But it was brought to a study session. At the study session, Counselor Bosman took interest in the ordinance. A mild ordinance was provided. I think it was even shown in the newspaper. We substantially changed that to make it a more of a consumer protection ordinance than a puppy mill critical ordinance. And it was introduced last month and this month is up for consideration at a first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed ordinance. Is there a number that I have to add to that?
Yes, we did assign a number to it. It is. Ben, we have an ordinance number for this one yet? Or am I dreaming?
Yeah, and Mr. Yeah, and Mr. Morgan, we generally don't assign the ordinance numbers until we do a final reading.
Okay.
So I routed you numbers for the ones that were final.
So we don't have a number for it tonight.
Do I have a second? I don't believe we have a second.
Okay, so without a second, the motion dies.
Motion dies. Okay, so we will not have public comment for this then?
No, it's, it's no longer an agenda item if it dies without a second. So you have no discussion, no comment from the public and no comment from the council. So you have an opportunity to comment on non-agenda items since it died without a second. There's no hearing on it, there's no council discussion of it. But if you'd like to comment on it, you'll have an opportunity at item number?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Okay, moving on to item eleven point two, another proposed ordinance. We do have a presentation on this.
Thank you, Tom, Mayor and Council. My name is Ben Florine, Chief Deputy Clerk. And this presentation is regarding an ordinance repealing the local licensing authority and amending the code of ordinances to enact the clerk's office as the local licensing authority. So specifically, this is a proposed ordinance repealing Chapter Five, Article Eight, the Durango Local Licensing Authority, and amending Chapter Thirteen, Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purposes of enacting the city clerk's office as the local licensing authority and declaring an effective date. So specifically, this ordinance supports council's goal in the strategic plan of financial excellence and high-performing government. And it also supports, uh, council's boards and commissions' recommendations to streamline efficiencies and public processes that you guys began earlier this year. The benefits of transitioning the Durango Local Licensing Authority to a clerk's administrative process will give us the benefits of eliminating excessive meetings and staff time. It will issue liquor and marijuana licenses more quickly, which is going to be a benefit to our business community and the business owners. And we're also, while we're doing this, we're still going to maintain thorough review and approval processes interdepartmentally. So what is the Durango Local Licensing Authority? So it's a City of Durango Board that reviews and approves all liquor and marijuana licenses. Currently, the meetings are scheduled once a month. However, if we don't have any new licenses, we don't, we don't host the meeting. But we generally host about nine or ten meetings a year to review and approve liquor and marijuana licenses. Applications are generally submitted two to three months before we are able to schedule them for a meeting. But during that time, the clerk's office and other departments gather and route documents. And we get interdepartmental approvals. And we also get approvals from outside agencies such as San Juan Basin Health Department and the Liquor Enforcement Division, for example. And so what we do is we get those approvals and we basically make sure the application is complete. And then we bring it to the local licensing authority for approval. There's currently several challenges with our current licensing approval format. These local licensing authority meetings are very short. Generally, the app is ready and complete, but the local licensing authority meetings are almost a formality with a public hearing. Ninety-nine percent of the legwork is done outside of the local licensing authority meetings. And scheduled meeting dates for approval can delay businesses in starting. For example, if we got a complete application submitted to our office tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to schedule them for approval till the fourth, uh, the fourth Tuesday in September, when we generally host the meetings, the fourth Tuesday of each month. Work on the board for the board members is often not substantial. So roles may not feel validating and attendance can be a challenge. And on top of that, with the meeting scheduled once a month, they take staff time to attend. It can be hard to pinpoint those with all of staff's busy schedules. So with our new administrative coordination, the city clerk's office would be the designated local licensing authority. And licenses would be approved on regular meeting agendas with the opportunity for a public hearing as well if there was significant opposition to a new licensee coming into town. And so what the new process will look like is licensee would submit us an application. We would continue with our departmental and entity approvals with our community partners and organizations. And once we have a complete application, we would schedule final approval for, at a city council meeting. And it would be under administrative, other administrative items for approval. And so with that said, this is the recommendation for the ordinance. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance repealing Chapter Five, Article Eight, Local Durango Local Licensing Authority and amending Chapter Thirteen, Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purposes of enacting the city clerk's office as the local licensing authority and declaring an effective date for final reading at the August fifteenth regular city council meeting.
Excellent, I will second that. Oh, did you, that's okay, okay. And I will open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment for this? And anyone virtually?
Ah, no mayor, no one has raised their hand virtually.
Okay, I'll close the public comment. Discussion from council.
I've got a few questions. Ben, how many licenses were given out in twenty twenty-two for, from your organization?
I don't have the specific number for twenty twenty-two. I want to say we hosted more meetings last year, probably about nine or ten licenses. So far in the seven months this year, we have issued, I think, three or four new liquor licenses.
And then how many applications, the same?
Yeah, exactly.
So just coming from the restaurant industry, previously, the Colorado Department of Liquor, Liquor Enforcement Division, LED, they would conduct random licensee inspections. Would that fall under your purview now that you would be the local licensing authority to do those random inspections?
The short answer is no, they, they can issue their own violations and establish their own courses of correction. There are times, and so the city does liquor stings as well. And generally between the Department of Revenue and/or our police department, we could potentially address violations at city council meetings in the future as well. And what that would look like is depending on where the violation lies, staff would develop a staff presentation, recommended courses of actions for council to approve. And those violations could ultimately be worked out at a regular council meeting or a special meeting if you wanted to host that.
So that, um, that, what used to be a whole committee before would make those decisions would now fall under this body. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
For like any sort of like infraction or some sort of administrative action taken against a liquor licensee?
Correct, yes. And as the local licensing authority, we would have all the information, depending on how the violation shook out, presented thoroughly to you guys, staff presentations, recommendations on courses of action as well.
And then you guys would be the bodies to give to process to the license holder who was being charged with the violation.
Now, so it could be under a normal city council meeting or a special meeting?
If that was to occur, there's a section on the agenda for other administrative items requiring a council vote. So we would, depending on how big of an issue it was, we could do it separately or we could do it during a regular council meeting.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of like all the logistical pieces, you know, make sure there's no conflicts of interest and, you know, it's a small town, but all of our favorite places to go frequent, you know, having that fall under this body. Just, I don't know, just trying to think of unintended consequences. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
Excellent, moving on to item number twelve, public comment on non-agenda items. Can we get the signup sheet, please? Uh, we will limit public comment to three minutes. Council will not respond from the dais. Please direct your comment to council on the dais. Um, when you come to the podium, please state your name and whether you are a resident of the city or not. We will also check for virtual comments. We will start with Rick Cobb.
Hey folks, Rick Cobb from Three Springs. And here as always to lobby for my neighborhood in general, but in particular, the Smart One Sixty, which apparently was recommended by the Financial Advisory Board to move about a million dollars worth of funding this year to pay for pickleball courts at Snyder Park Overage, which I think is the smart thing to do in the sense that we're still waiting for C and J Gravel to figure out their easement alignment stuff. So why not get the pickleball courts up? I want to make sure that that doesn't mean we're going to have a delay beyond next year. I want to make sure the funding just moves forward, not disappear. Because quite frankly, the only thing better than playing pickleball at Snyder Park is when I'm going to be able to ride from Three Springs on the Smart One Sixty to go play pickleball. So that's, that's what I'm hoping for. Number two, that Financial Advisory Board did make that recommendation. And apparently that was in the middle of tons and tons of other projects that they're reviewing. And for those of us who spend a lot of time on parks and rec type things, to sit through chip seal projects and ADA compliant curbs and water treatment. And so I think this is a perfect example of a working group that we need to have or the Financial Advisory Board on post, you know, parks, open space, trails type things. As initial, I looked on a connect and engage, I don't see that yet, but hopefully that's a new thing to add quickly because too many, too many things for one board. Last one is in order to keep funding all these types of projects, what's going on with sales tax renewal? I'm not going to have many chances to do this, so the clock is ticking, ticking, ticking. It's going to be here before we know it. So hopefully, uh, again, I haven't seen anything published on what the plans are, but I'd like to you know, know what those are so we don't miss those windows of opportunity to keep funding. I like the current structure of the sales tax now where half of it goes to, you know, post-type projects that are easily or makes more sense to fund them on an annual basis, like repairing the Amish River Trail. The other half goes to paying off bonds, which pay for the big bang upfront projects. And whether that's workforce housing or Durango Mesa Park or emergency services. I think we need the, the open space, the parks, the trail type stuff to sell the whole tax. You know, I would be nervous about not having any parks and open space trail component to that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Joyce Cohen. Good evening. I've had the pleasure of speaking with each of you individually. And although this puppy mill pet store ordinance has been dubbed a feel-good ordinance, I really thought that you guys all had the wisdom and the compassion to realize that it really was more than that. I mean, I know that we don't like putting unnecessary restrictions on businesses, but there are some things that are just so morally reprehensible that they cross the line. And this is one of those things. Puppy and kitten mills probably would have been eradicated a long time ago had the occupants of those mills had a voice. But they have no voice. And that's what, why we need to do, we can do on their behalf. I especially thought that this would go forward after the beautiful preamble that Mr. Morgan wrote in the ordinance, which really outlined why this is needed, not just for humanitarian reasons, but also for consumer protection reasons. You know, I know one of the concerns also was that, you know, council has bigger fish to fry than this. But when is there a good time for this? The council's always going to have issues that consume its time and energy. And once a store opens up that wants to sell puppies and kittens, it's too late. You can't go back and you're not going to pass this ordinance once a, once a store like that opens. Another concern is, well, Durango doesn't have any stores that sell puppies and kittens. But again, it's too late if you wait until one wants to open. This is a preemptive ordinance, ordinance. And, you know, just to get the record straight, in case the press is here and does another article and gets things wrong, there have been several cases brought in both state and federal court on this issue. And in every case, these ordinance has been found both legal and constitutional. And given the fact that these challenges have been struck down every single time and that Durango doesn't have a pet store currently that sells puppies and kittens, it is highly unlikely that any lawsuit would be brought here. I know another concern was about breeders. And what if breeders want to sell their, their animals? I urge you to ask breeders you know if they would ever sell to a pet store. And I assure you that the answer is going to be no. These people treat their animals humanely, which is why they would never be able to produce enough puppies to open a storefront. So I guess this is dead for another two years, but hopefully if you are on the council or there's a different council, you would reconsider this in the name of all those animals that again have no voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any virtual comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have Alyssa Miller Hurley, and I'm going to allow her to speak now.
Okay.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I hope I'm coming through. Well, I know virtual sometimes doesn't always work, but I do want to take the time to thank the council for allowing me to talk quickly on the ordinance having to do with the prohibition of the retail sale of cats and dogs. And I'm here on behalf of the Pet Advocacy Network. And we are the advocacy voice of the responsible pet care community. And we represent a wide variety of interests, those folks that are, you know, expertise hobbyists, retailers, suppliers, manufacturers, owners and veterinarians, really anyone that kind of crosses the, the broad scope of responsible pet care and ownership within the United States. And while we're pleased to see the action taken, you know, this evening in not bringing the ordinance up, we were also pleased to see that there is interest in wanting to put forth rules and regulations that do crack down on those bad actors. And one of the things that we have worked with in city councils and state legislatures are regulations that go to the heart of the matter, and that is those bad breeders. Extreme bans like the one that has been proposed here, ones that have been passed in California, have been shown not to actually target those bad actors. And the most effective way to do so is to make sure that we are sourcing animals properly, making sure that we are having those store owners, those breeders have to adhere to a set of standards. And Colorado has already taken phenomenal steps forward with the PACFA regulations. And building off of those great steps forward, we've worked with cities like Colorado City to enact additional rules and regulations that serve as guardrails that protect both pet choice, support small businesses and really target those bad actors. There is, you know, I always hear that AKC breeders and small breeders would never sell to stores. And I do want to quickly just kind of put that myth to rest. In conversations I had with the AKC this week, they've told me that there are a wide variety of very responsible breeders. And there are those that produce one litter a year and those that do work directly with responsible store owners. And that's the kind of partnership we litter a year and those that do work directly with responsible store owners. And that's the kind of partnership we do want to encourage. And so we would really look forward to and we would welcome the opportunity to work with the council and other interested parties in trying to find a way forward that would protect animals, would support potential small businesses and protect pet choice in the city of Durango. And again, I want to take the time to appreciate the actions that you've taken and also thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening.
Thank you very much. Any other commenter? Virtually.
No mayor, no one else has raised their hand.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. All right, with that, we'll move on to 13, introduction of ordinance. Ordinances and requests for public hearing. Item 13.1. This is an ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for the Durango Mesa addition to the City of Durango and declaring an effective date. This is an introduction of the ordinance only. If there is council support, it will be placed on the agenda for consideration, discussion and possible action on September 5th. This is only a step to see if there's council support to bring this topic forward for consideration. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve an ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for the Durango Mesa addition to the City of Durango and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Council discussion?
So Scott, did you want to give a little bit on this one? I mean, really, the main presentation would be next time, but this one's a little bit complicated. You already passed on your consent agenda, the resolution accepting the petition to start the process of annexation. The next step is getting the ordinance introduced in a public hearing set. Scott, I'm kind of doing your job here, but there's a there's a 30 day delay by state statute between the time the ordinance, between the petition is accepted and the time that you conduct the public hearing, which is why it's been suggested that it be put on the September 5th meeting. This is the type of action that you could schedule a separate standalone public hearing for. But this is such a community positive thing. I think there's been some discussion that just having it the regular meeting on September 5th would suffice because it's not controversial. But there are definitely some things you might want to do at that meeting. So I didn't mean to steal Scott's thunder, but we, the full ordinance doing it is actually written and it's in the packet. It adds up today. So it's out there for public consumption for 30 days until you consider it on September 5th.
Thank you for that recap. Scott, you all set then? Okay. I believe then we have a motion in a second. Further council discussion, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to other new business. Do we have any other new business? Seeing none, moving on to other matters. Item number 15.
Yeah, I had, as you are aware, I was going to make a motion for a discussion because during the study session and the Financial Advisory Board were made aware that the bits for the pickleball courts were significantly higher than when we had that initial discussion. Currently, the initial discussion about a year ago, I guess, was 800,000. And now it's 1.9 million plus 525 restaurants. Based on that new information, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the pickleball court location based on those bits recently received.
Do we have a second? Seeing none, motion dies on the floor. So moving on to 15.1, request for excused absences. I'm requesting to be excused from the August 15th meeting. I'm traveling to a family wedding and I may be able to tap in virtually, but I'd like to, in the event that I cannot tap in virtually, I'd like to be officially excused from that meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. For any discussion, roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
And 15.2. Directives. No directives. Okay, ah, well then. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.